All right, good evening, everybody. City of Clear Lake Shore, City Council, regular meeting along with the joint public hearing with the Planning and Zoning Committee. We'll commence here in a second with them, but first we're going to start off with the regular council meeting, June 7th, 2022, at 6:30. Council members present are Alex Scanlon, Randy Cronister, Monica Lade, and Steve Wortis, and Rick Fisher is out with excused absence. We do have a quorum. Item number two, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and Texas flag. All right, busy house, so we get to recognize our seniors for this year graduating out of high schools, and congratulations.[77.11][77.11](APPLAUSE). I know some are not all here, but first I'll state the proclamation for the senior class of 2022. Whereas the year 2022 continues to bring about dramatic changes in the daily lives and routines of all citizens in the city of Clear Lake Shores, and whereas May and June marks the months of graduation of high school seniors across the country, and whereas we celebrate and honor the 2022 graduating seniors and their years of education, and whereas it is important to acknowledge the challenging situations being presented to graduating seniors and honor their hard work and dedication, and whereas we encourage families, friends, and neighbors to congratulate these graduates and their communities, recognize their achievements, and honor them and their journey of education. And now therefore I, Mayor of City of Clear Lake Shores, Texas, on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby proclaim June 7th, 2022, as 2022 Seniors Recognition Day, City of Clear Lake Shores.[149.69][149.69](APPLAUSE). And if you're present, please come up and we'll give you your certificate. So first is Aubrey Kirkpatrick, Bryce A. Tuma, Jackson Draper, Carly Davis, Lauren Bailey. The next one's coming up. Come on, Mackenzie Skinner. All right.[182.81][182.81](APPLAUSE). And Lindsey Putnam. Let's make sure I get the right one. There you go, congratulations. And if you want to, hold on, stay up here, because I think we'll get a picture once the Civic Club goes ahead and presents their award also.
Thank you. Georgia South, I'm the president of the Civic Club here in Clear Lake Shores. Sorry about that. One of the many things that we do for the community in addition to putting on numerous events throughout the year is we do tremendous amount of fundraising throughout the year to give scholarships to our seniors. This year, we had two applicants apply, and we have a $1,500 scholarship going to Lindsey Putnam, and then we have a $2,000 scholarship going to Mackenzie Skinner. We thank everyone in the community who donates throughout the year for us to be able to give back to our seniors and congratulate them in going on to college. Thank you all. I want to get a picture with you.
All right, next is go ahead and call or order the, well, actually Steve Wortis will call to order the joint public hearing of the Planning and Zoning. And if your members will step up to the tables or chairs that are available. There's two up here, too, with another microphone. And Steve, do you have a quorum? Use your mic, please.
Yes, we do have four members present.
All right. We'll go and call the items out from the council. So the joint public hearing with City Council and the Planning and Zoning Commission concerning the change in zoning requests submitted for an item A is DS-9 Investment Properties LLC, owner of property located at Abstract 18, Maldune, Survey Lot 201, Clear Lake Shores, requesting zoning change from Neighborhood Commercial NC to C1 Commercial District. At this time, the public hearing is open. Folks have three minutes to speak on behalf. If you please use the microphone up at the podium and state your name and your address. Nobody? Anyone? Okay. Sorry about this. Steve, you have approval of the minutes on your agenda before we get to the public hearing.
Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes from the previous meeting?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second by Mike. All in favor? Any opposed? Negative. Motion passes. Approved, minutes are approved.
All right, thank you. And back to the joint meeting again with the item A, any discussion from the public? Having none, item B, DS-9 Investment Properties LLC, owner of property located at Abstract 18, Maldune, Survey Lot 202, Clear Lake Shores, requesting a zoning changing from NC Neighborhood Commercial to C1 Commercial District. Anyone would like to speak on that behalf? Having none, move to item C. Suzanne Lee, owner of property located at 1016 Aspen, requesting a change in zoning from R1 Residential District to C1 Commercial District. Anyone would like to speak on that behalf? Yes. Yeah, would you please come to the podium?
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is David Thorley. I own the lot at 1016 Aspen Drive. Through this commercial, this zoning, they would change it right from residential to my next door where I was planning on building a house. I bought in this community because there was zoning. I have lived in Houston where people don't have any zoning and can move back and forth, and they'll have a bar next to you, or you have a grocery store next to you. So I really, the reason I bought in this area was so we wouldn't have a peppered bunch of stuff, and in fact, we all had zoning there already before there. I really don't want to live next to a commercial lot. Okay?
Thank you. Anyone else? Having none, we'll close item, oh, sorry. Yes, ma'am, can you come up, please?
After this, you're being stupid. I don't understand based on the last meeting. Do I need an order? To say my history?
No.
I believe I was at the last meeting. There was a vote. I'm not understanding what this is about since we voted against commercial with you guys at the last meeting. Am I right? Is that what happened?
So there was a meeting, and unfortunately, it was out of procedure. And so this puts us in the procedure with having a joint session meeting with Planning and Zoning in attendance and the City Council.
So this is a repeat?
It's a repeat. It's not, that other meeting did happen, and everything was recorded, and Planning and Zoning personnel or committee was in presence there, and everything did happen, and in fact, there was a full house of council there, just that they were not in a session. So this puts us in procedure to have the joint session, and then the Planning and Zoning has up to 30 days to make a recommendation to council, and per Mr. Wortis, they will make that recommendation tonight, and then council will be voting on it in their agenda items immediately after this.
So all the discussion that we had is null and void?
No, it did happen.
Okay.
Yes.
To her point, so are all the comments still on the record from the previous meeting?
They are.
And they'll still, those comments from previous meeting?
That's what's in the minutes that was just approved.
Okay, thank you.
Any further items on item C? Having none, moving to item D. Suzanne Lee, owner of property located at 1026 Aspen, requesting a change in zoning from R1 Residential District to C1 Commercial District. Anyone would like to speak on that behalf? Yes?
I'm a little hard hearing, it's a little hard to understand. And you decided that what we decided in the first go around is going to be what we decided tonight?
The meeting did occur, but you do have to take another vote tonight and make a recommendation to council.
Is it going to be a vote from Planning and Zoning or a vote?
A vote from Planning and Zoning during this joint session, and Planning and Zoning will take a vote without council, and that will be a recommendation from Mr. Wortis, the chair, to the City Council.
So just to make sure everything is, I understand it, like when Ellen talked a while ago, everything is still the same on the previous motion as it is on this motion from before?
It was made, yes.
Okay.
There is another one tonight.
Okay, I just want, I don't know if we have to go through this on every step as each request has been made to change.
They will tonight, yes.
But I mean, do we have to get up and say?
No, no, that all did occur, so unless you feel adamant about repeating all that again tonight, you can. Certainly not holding you back from it. Anybody else on item D? All right, that closes the public hearing, and Steve, it's back to you for item four on old business.
Oh, you don't have a copy? Under old business, DS-9 Investment Properties LLC, owner of property located at Abstract M, Maldune, Survey Lot 201, Clear Lake Shores, requesting change in zoning from NC Neighborhood Commercial to C1 Commercial District. Do I, any discussion amongst the?
This is your meeting with the?
I understand, but I'm asking for the proper protocol at this point, do we?
Oh, so you would need a motion if you want to discuss, or a motion from the floor to take a vote, or whatever?
All right, is there a motion to discuss, or if anybody would like to?
I make a motion to deny item A.
Can I get a motion?
There's been a motion to deny and a second.
Then see if there's any discussion.
That's, any discussion? Having no discussion, we take a vote at this time. All members in favor of denying the change in zoning, raise your hand. Being that there's none opposed, the motion is denied. Item B under old business?
Can I interject that it's really not the PMZ's place to deny or approve these. They offer a recommendation to the City Council, so if you word it as a favorable recommendation or unfavorable recommendation, I think that's putting that out, and it would be in line for future as far as recommending.
Okay, I'll change my motion to, as a recommendation to not approve by City Council.
Unfavorable?
Unfavorable.
Is there a second? Mike, thank you. Any discussion? Having none, let's take a vote. All in favor of not, or rather, an unfavorable recommendation with regard to the zoning change? Is that correct? Thank you. Raise your hand. None opposed. Therefore, the Planning and Zoning Commission members are not recommending a favorable, I'm trying to find the right words. We are, we're not denying the recommendation, we are not recommending the approval of the zoning change. Is that better? Very good. All right, hopefully the next three will go smoother. Item B, DS-9 Investment Properties LLC, owner of property located at Abstract M, Maldune, Survey Lot 202, Clear Lake Shores, requesting a change in zoning from Neighborhood Commercial to C1 Commercial District. Is there any discussion with regard to this matter?
Make a motion for unfavorable recommendation.
We've received a motion and a second for an unfavorable recommendation with regard to the change in zoning. All members who are, all members who do not wish to recommend a zoning change, raise your hand. Having none opposed, motion carries. Item C, Suzanne Lee, owner of property located at 1016 Aspen, requesting a change in zoning from R1 Residential Commercial to C1 Commercial District. Is there any discussion on this matter?
Unfavorable recommendation, motion?
Having an unfavorable recommendation and a second, we will all now vote on the matter. All members who are not in favor of a favorable recommendation, all, I'm sorry. All members who do not wish to recommend changing the zoning, raise your hand. All members have raised their hand, there will be none opposed, motion carries. Final item, item D, Suzanne Lee, owner of property located at 1026 Aspen, requesting a change in zoning from R1 to Residential District to C1 Commercial District. Any discussion on this matter?
Make a motion for unfavorable recommendation.
Having a motion and a second for an unfavorable recommendation, members will now vote. All members who do not, all members who are not in favor of recommending a change in the zoning, raise your hand. None opposed, motion carries. I'm sorry?
I make a motion for the Planning and Zoning to adjourn.
Very good. Meeting closed. Thank you.
Thank you, Planning and Zoning. Appreciate that. That was, all right, thank y'all. All right. Next is item five, council back in session after that joint session with Planning and Zoning. Thank you for all that. Reports from council, Councilman Steve Wortis.
Have nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. Councilwoman Monica Lade.
So I attended a workshop here at the clubhouse a couple weeks ago for the San Jacinto Regional Flood Planning Group. I don't know if anybody else came, it was an open meeting, there were signs all over the place. I actually thought I was missing something important from City Council and was kind of freaked out when I pulled up, but I'm glad I stopped. And it's, this is a group that was put together to recommend funding for different regions and different projects and where we live. So I highly suggest that you go to the website, San Jacinto, it's San Jacinto Regional Flood Planning Group, and the website is sanjacinofloodplanning.org, and kind of play around on it, look at all of the maps, and give your input, because that's how they're going to base who's getting whatever grants they're going to give out. And I'm going to pass this on to you, Alex, because I think it's important.
And everybody was asking what party was going on.
I know, right?
And no one had an answer, so would have been nice from city staff to know what was going on in our own city.
Well, I actually did make that suggestion to them. I said whenever you book a clubhouse, no matter what neighborhood you're in, to make sure that you let the city know.
Right.
That's what they're there for, because they hadn't let, they hadn't put out any kind of notices, I asked.
Okay.
And they said it's on their Facebook page, but if you don't know about the group, you don't know about their Facebook page.
That'd be great, I appreciate that. Councilman Alex Scanlon?
The Rose and Drainage Met a couple weeks ago, well, I think I'll be doing that in the committee report, I think I'm the one here, so I'll save that for later.
All right, thank you, Mr. Scanlon. And Councilman Randy Cronister?
I don't have anything to report. I would like to give a shout out to all the graduates, once again, for graduating, the ones that applied for the scholarships.
Thank you, Mr. Cronister. Just a couple, one note really is we're having, we'll be having the Fourth of July celebration for the city. It's a city function, and I know the Civic Club helps out, and I think the Yacht Club usually will participate also and help us out, but it'll be on Saturday preceding the Fourth of July, on July 2nd. We'll be having a parade, and then the KEMA, Clear Lake Shores Volunteer Fire Department will be present, they'll have their 343 ladder truck in our parade, and then also EMS will be in attendance, so hopefully everybody come out, we'll be having, hopefully hamburgers and hot dogs, or just hot dogs, and serving that up, and everybody come out and have a good time for that. Next is staff reports, item six, Police Department Chief Keel.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, citizens. Clear Lake Shores Police Department, monthly stats for the month of May 2022, we conducted 187 traffic contacts, we made two arrests for driving while intoxicated, we made two arrests for narcotics offenses, responded to five disturbance calls, one fraud call, pains me to say this, one homicide, six theft calls, 18 arrests including warrants, 13 assists to other agencies, conducted 58 residential checks, and 422 business checks. The, an update on Officer Galvan's recovery, is he had surgery, and there was a period of time where he's, no movement at all in his arm was allowed. He has since graduated to physical therapy, his spirits are good, and we look forward to him coming back as soon as possible. The July 2nd, Fourth of July events, if you have an opportunity to come out, I'll be cooking hamburgers or helping cook hamburgers, not to be missed, trust me. We do have our new fleet on the road, if you've seen them, they're being utilized, the officers seem to be very happy with the accommodations that we've made so far, and we're in the process of replacing Sergeant Beeler. We did make a recommendation for hiring, and we are awaiting her arrival, but Officer Hannah Mason will be joining us. She has worked for La Porte Police Department, a police department, a sheriff's office in Colorado, and also Nassau Bay Police Department, she has some experience. We're potentially looking at another acquisition, and that is early in the process, so I won't identify that person yet. Other than that, I don't have anything, unless you have any questions. The last I heard was physical, when physical therapy started about two weeks ago, it should be five to six weeks minimum before his doctor will make another recommendation on how that goes, so we're hopeful, getting him back pretty quickly.
Thank you, Chief, and please let Officer Galvan know that we're thinking about him and have a good recovery and all that stuff. And I do know the Civic Club and all their several resident citizens were able to donate and get those funds to Officer Galvan to help out his family, so that was very thankful for that. Next is Brent Spear, City Administrator.
Good evening, congratulations to the graduates. It's quite a, quite a big deal anymore in this post-COVID world, things are changing, so thank you for completing that. This microphone is extremely sensitive tonight, so you have a copy of my report, council, the highlights I'd like to touch on, the Texas Parks and Wildlife Grant, we are, we do have sealed bids, and we've answered some questions from Fish and Wildlife Service, GLO, and US Army Corps of Engineers. Those responses and changes to some of the drawings have been submitted as of today. Things that I'm dealing with on that is removal of some rip rap at the end of the ramp to prevent scouring that's well below waterline, but they don't like it there. We need to have a plan in place to relocate fish that are possibly compromised during the construction process, so I have a pair of waders, and I may need to borrow a net, and my plan is to go down there every morning and check that out, see if anything's flopping around in that cofferdam. And finally, the last thing was to show some, the datums, which is a bunch of numbers that relate to water elevation and tides and so forth, so they wanted that information all in the same document. So that has been worked through, and we're hopefully moving right on down the line for approval on those permits so we can move forward. Daniel Drawer Avenue, the construction of that is primarily, on the ground is completed, foundations are in for traffic lights, and over the last couple days, I've noted Center Point's been over there doing some utility pole relocation, so if you get a chance, that's at 518, across from, I believe it's, is it Enterprise Drive, on the end of the KEMA shops, or the shops at KEMA. The, the, the plan is to get that traffic light installed after they're done doing the relocation, and that will be open to traffic. And currently, we have some people that are sneaking around the barricades, but it is officially closed, it is kind of a dangerous section at the end. So try to avoid it, but if you drive by and take a glance, it is a nice road, and will certainly provide additional accommodations to people wanting to come to Clear Lake Shores, and we're happy for that. As far as storm, storm season goes, we've already had a named storm. As far as storm, storm season goes, we've already had a named storm out in the Atlantic, and it petered out, so that was good. And today, if you didn't get a email, or a text message, or a phone call, we did test the CLS Connect system today. So based on my report, we only had about 48% of the cellphones work, so if you have a cellphone and you want to, and you want to get a phone call, please sign up for that. I think 87% of the text messages went through that we had on file, and it was mid-60% for emails. I know those change frequently for some people. So if you didn't get that, sign up, and that will keep you in the know, and that is how we will roll out emergency information if needed. One thing that I will bring forth, we have a planned, or the chief has planned pizza with the police coming up on June 23rd, 6:30 PM here at the clubhouse, and so hopefully come out, and I'm sure he'll have lots of interesting words to offer to the community, plus some additional, some delicious pizza.
A little bit.
Okay. And the rest of the items are on the agenda, so I'll handle those when they come up.
Brent, I got a quick question. I had a couple of citizens reach out to me that are concerned about our boat ramp being used for this outlaw challenge, big boats. What, we got anything planned to deter them from doing that, tearing the ramp?
No, I was thinking, thinking about, I was looking a little further down, down the pike at, once it's repaired, how do we limit larger craft from using it? So I think we might want to look with GLO's help at setting a vessel size or a limit for launching. Some of those big boats, depending on where the tide's at, and of course you're aware of that, but if it's low, they're going to have trouble getting in and out anyway, so I don't know if they can put them in over off of, was it 270? There's a, there's a ramp underneath the road.
The Marina's actually doing a lot of stuff with those boats. They're, they're offering a lot of different things.
Yeah, True North is offering stuff too, but could we not close it for boats larger than 30 feet for that weekend?
Yeah.
Put a sign up, I mean, it's not really enforceable, but it'll deter. And put it up front here, so then I'll drive all the way down there.
Yeah.
Or we can keep it a secret, say the boat ramp's closed, and only us people know.
This is a recorded meeting, so secrets out. Yeah, I'll get a, I'll get some signs. We'll get one up here front, and we'll get one down at the boat ramp. If we get, you know, 60% compliance, that's 60% of the larger boats that aren't coming and going, so.
Can we, can we lift, lift up two asks for it?
So something to consider in the ordinance down the road, but also for the weekend, it could, but it's just trying to explain that type of stuff. But it is for the safety of the people, because the ramp's very short and it drops off drastically, and two, it damages either the ramp or their boats. And our roads.
Mr. Mayor, you got a hand?
Yes.
Shorter than me, so.
Yes.
On that note, I've noticed when I'm walking, walking my dog, that there are two commercial companies that obviously sell boats, that I see on a regular basis, and I meet three, four times a week.
Yeah, there's, there's nothing, it's a public ramp.
Alright, go ahead, Brent.
Yes, sir.
Alright, thanks. Next is item seven, committee reports. This one here is Parks and Pool.
Unfortunately, our meeting is not scheduled to next Monday, which is the second Monday of the month, so we haven't had a meeting to go over some issues. It's not unusual, but we are dealing with many people getting into the pool that do not have memberships, they're getting really creative how they're doing it, just learned of some new information today, but we'll go with our meeting, so we'll be discussing that. The, the guards are doing a really good job now of checking tags, but also, we have had firsthand knowledge of Airbnb rentals having access to our pool and advertising our pool. It was firsthand knowledge from a member, they were actually in the pool area after the guards left, so that is of concern, because it does go against the pool rules that a guest must be accompanied by the actual tag holder. And I do see there is an item D on the agenda, we'll be discussing Airbnb issues, so we will take that up later, see what, what gets resolved with that. And otherwise, I just noticed, there's a couple of kids swimming at, where the actual boat ramp is, and I didn't, couldn't see any signs there saying no swimming, there's no fishing on the dock, but we haven't discussed that yet, and I did go try to look and couldn't see any no, no swimming signs, but seems like that's rather dangerous, the kids swimming right where the boats could be coming in, so that's another thing we'll take up. So hopefully next month I will have more updates from our meeting. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Rintson. Next is roads and drainage.
Now, roads and drainage met two or three weeks ago, May 19th, I think. If you've noticed, the cracks around the island were sealed, I don't know if we talked about that last meeting, took us a while to get that going, but we were able to do it for, I think, under $6,000, which is really affordable for keeping our roads maintained and extending their life, because that's really our goal, is to stretch our budget further, especially with new roads like Drawor Avenue coming in, which we'll be responsible for part of the maintenance on. Narcissus, I just, just saw this in Brent's update, so thank you for that, Brent. Looks like, not Narcissus, I'm sorry, Blue Point will be starting in about three weeks for a restoration project, they're going to do some milling and repaving of the street, basically restoring the surface, shouldn't affect any driveway transitions, hoping they're all the same, that's, that is the intent, and all residents should be able to get in and out of their homes at all points, so there shouldn't be any restrictions like we've seen on some other projects. Beyond that, we're continuing work on a couple of other projects, but nothing notable to share at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Scanlon. Next is zoning board of adjustments.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. There has been no meetings for the zoning board of adjustments. We do have another meeting for planning and zoning, won't go over all the previous meetings, I think everybody here is probably aware of those, but there is a request for a meeting on the 27th of June, 7 o'clock, for replating two properties on Aspen. That's all I know at this time. So anybody interested in that, may want to look forward to that meeting coming up on the 27th of June.
Thank you, Mr. Matuszewski. And last is waterfront compliance committee.
The waterfront compliance committee members, we had an inspection on May the 19th of all the slips and made notes, we're right now, you know, we've helped some, you know, filled in some dirt, but we're trying to be neighborly, and we're going to be contacting, you know, people we know and help them, or, you know, do whatever we need to do, and the ones we can't contact will be going to the city, they can send out letters, you know, the ones that aren't in compliance. We put tags on all the slips last month, except for one, we just need one, two tags for one slip, but all the tags are on, so no more slip from missing tags unless the boards go away. We're working with City Council on making changes to the lease, making it more adequate, more common sense, and, you know, we're working with City Council on that. That's all I have.
Thank you, Doug. And one thing to add, the city will be putting out a lot of information about the waterfront lease being renewed, it's renewed every 10 years, so this is coming up, so in the next bill for your waterfront lease, most likely there'll be like a little checkbox that you want to renew and work with Christie, our city secretary. We want to make sure we get that out, and then we'll go out and get with other folks that didn't renew, and make sure that they, they really understand that they're not renewing, and then those will go back out for auction again if they don't renew. So be aware of that, and make sure you check for it, because it's up to the leaseholder to sign up with the city that they want to keep their lease. Alright, that completes the committee reports. Next is item eight, civic club activity report.
Hi, thank you, Mayor and Council. As the mayor mentioned earlier, we will be having the Freedom Celebration for the July 4th on Saturday, July 2nd, with the golf cart parade, water slides, hamburgers and hot dogs. We do need volunteers, I will be sending out the sign up sheet like I usually do for all the volunteers, so we would greatly appreciate you lending some of your time for this event. In August, we have the back to school event coming up for the kids, and we will need a chairperson to head that up as well. With regards to Officer Galvan, the Civic Club did collect and donate $1,400 to his family to help defray some of the costs that he is experiencing while he is off, and he and his family were very appreciative of the donations. As always, if anyone is ever interested in volunteering for the Civic Club, we are always in need of volunteers, contact myself or Teresa, we would greatly appreciate it.
Thank you, Georgette. Next is item number nine, CLS 60th Anniversary Celebration Committee. Georgette.
Okay. On the 60th anniversary, if you received your Islander this month, there's a lot of information on the 60th anniversary. You're able to make reservations for your tickets, there's information included in there as well. It's also going to be on our Civic Club website. There's a frequently asked questions section, which I think we tried to come, come up with the most, I guess, asked questions that we've been receiving, and so that's included as well. So far, tickets are available for reservation, and then as the event gets closer, which is December 8th, we will actually disperse the tickets. So far, we have sold five corporate sponsorship tables at $1,000 apiece. We will also be doing a raffle through the end of the year for several items, and our first item is going to be a $2,500 gift card, so information regarding that and tickets to purchase will be available at the Freedom Celebration.
Thanks, Georgette, sounds like a fun event, and encourage everybody to get their tickets early before it sells out. Next is item 10, Economic Development Corporation. Do you have anything to add, Brent?
Mr. Boltinghouse wasn't feeling very well, so he didn't know if he was going to make it. They've had pretty light agenda items, but they're working on some issues with some businesses and working, working that offline, offline right now. And upcoming next month, plan to have a budget agenda item on their, on their agenda so that we can set fiscal year 2023 budget with them. Should have a little bit better direction, because the Parks and Wildlife Grant will hopefully be moving forward at that point.
Thank you. Item number 11, public comments. At this time, any person with city-related business may speak to City Council. Topic of discussion must be consistent with an item listed on the agenda. In compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, City Council may not deliberate. Comments from the public should be limited to a maximum of three minutes per individual. Anybody have public comments at this time?
I have a question about public comments.
Please.
Can we, on public comments, can we jump ahead to one of the new business items, or should we just sit and wait?
Yes, you can talk on that.
Okay. I'd like to talk about the Airbnb committee. On my street, Pine Road, we're experiencing someone bought property that does not live here, they live in the city of Houston, and they are investors. Our concern is-
Can you speak up in the mic, sorry?
Our concern is, is that because they are investors and they are not residents, they have no reason to care about our community other than they can make money off of it, and we're worried that they will not vet the proposed renters like someone that lives here. I personally have stayed at Airbnbs, I think they're wonderful, but everyone I've ever stayed at, the person either owns, lives in the property I rented for the weekend, or lived, you know, right on the property, like next door. So again, the concern is, is that if investors come in and do this, they have no skin in the game except for money. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, can we have your name, please?
State your name and address, please.
Right. I'm David Jones, Farrelly New resident over at 727 Pine, right near the police station. Met the chief, appreciated him. I'm here to follow up, ask you that comment that was just made, so I want to talk about the short-term rental. So I brought some notes, so I'd stay within my three minutes real easy. I don't know what's been said before, we just moved in last year, we just built our house last year, so forgive me if I'm repeating anything that somebody's already said, but I was invited to come tonight, so thought I would, appreciate that. So real quick, my wife and I have been boating, just a little history, boating for over 30 years down here, we just didn't live in Clear Lake Shores, we lived in Houston. With a name like Davy Jones, I had to be a boat captain, I am a licensed boat captain, so I was just a natural. But we wanted to be down here near the water more permanently. So we, our old neighborhood in Houston have been there 40 years, and what we noticed over that 40 years is more and more homes became rentals, they slowly deteriorated. Now, that's really at the heart of what I'm going to say tonight, is the concern. I'm not saying I'm a fanatic or anything like that, I just have a concern. So they said come tonight and speak about it, so I am. The reason I'm here is that, specifically, my next door neighbor, his name is Chuck, great neighbor, great neighbor, he's moved out of state now, completely out of state. So this past year, he rented his house to a, to a family, great family, they actually moved to another house now here in Clear Lake Shores. So I had no, no complaint about a renter, per se. But now, see that he's renting, I believe, to a couple, and I went and spoke to that couple one day, because it's right next door to me over here, and what I learned from that couple is, they're renting from him, and they then turn around and rent for short-term rentals like weekend and week. So I define that personally, and I'm not a lawyer, I'm an engineer, but I define it as a sublet. And I, I assume it's legal, you know, for him to do what he wants, but from a Clear Lake Shores standpoint, my concern's about the long-term care of the home, and how it would be when the owner's out of state and people, you know, sublet it out to whoever. So the end result is, if there is a problem, my wife and I don't even know who we should call. The owner? The people subletting? Is it our responsibility to call if there's a problem? We don't know from one day to the next who's supposed to be there. There's different cars, and now at the moment, I don't think they've actually gotten a permit yet, if I, I spoke to Kevin about it, for short-term rental, but it really comes down to the, the way the ordinance is written now, which I read, it's an, it's a first attempt, that's how I look at it. And so perhaps the idea of subletting maybe should be covered in some fashion. Again, I'm not a lawyer, I'm just a guy with a house, and I just think that the ordinance should be looked at from that standpoint. If an owner, I do agree with the last lady, if an owner is in residence somewhere nearby, they'll watch over the house. That's not the case here, and especially with a sublet, it's probably almost never the case.
Time's up.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks. Craig?
Yeah, my wife and I have run an Airbnb on Clear Lake Shores for five years now. We have not had one single issue. We run a very well-maintained, our neighbors don't even know when we- Our neighbors don't even know when we have people over, and that's how it should be done. And I'm afraid that it's getting to the point where people are throwing a blanket over this big dragon head of an Airbnb, and that's not how it is. There's bad long-term renters, there's bad short-term renters, there's bad residents. And the ordinances are what keep, make us be able to control these situations. I don't need control, we do a great job. But anyway, we need to get, I think the idea of this new ad hoc committee is to get stronger ordinances in place. And if we have the rules in place and our officers can enforce these rules and council can back up the officers and take care of these places, I would just ask that everybody stop the crazy rumors that Airbnb people are throwing crawfish all over the park and all this nonsense that just isn't true. I'm sure there's a few problems, but those are not a blanket, you know, everyday thing. The people, the bad eggs, nobody wants a bad Airbnb removed from this island more than Rainelle and I. And I can speak for Kitty and I can speak for Juanita, I feel, that they don't want that either. We all three run tremendous businesses that don't bother a soul, and we all love this island, and there's more of us than the bad ones. And I would just ask everyone's patience and let us try to get this under control. You know, if the Chief will tell us what he needs, I'm sure we'll all jump in and help the Chief. If council needs something, we need to... But just as wild rumors on Facebook and Facebook shaming everybody, that's not doing any good. That just stirs up more crazy rumors. So let's all just calm down and take care of this problem, because I know there are some problems. But there's just as many problems with long-term renters and residents. It's just the way life is, and we need to be able to control it, and I'm all for that.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Next, yes, up front.
Hi, Mayor and Council. My name is Paul Sensat, and if it's okay, I'd like to read something from Mike Coranto. He's my next-door neighbor, if I can get it up here. Would it be okay if I read, he is out today, he was meant to be here today, and he wanted to talk on STRs. But if it's okay with you, I'd like to read it. Again, he's sick, he couldn't make it. It starts off as, "My name is Mike Coranto, and I live at two twenty-four Pine Road." And he said he had made plans to be here, obviously he couldn't, so that's why I'm here. As I mentioned earlier, I'm very interested in being a part of the committee that deals with STRs in our community. Anything I can do, please let me know. I'm very familiar with Airbnb. This person would be very important, I think, in this issue. And BRBOs, I'm not sure what those are. And we have used them extensively in the past. As I mentioned, I founded and ran an Airbnb management company in Chicago for a while. We know there are several well-run STRs here on the island, as mentioned earlier. And I'm very familiar with the upside and downsides of this industry, the STR industry. My concern is the home next door, two twenty Pine, and the new owners. These owners live in Houston and purchased this home to run an Airbnb exclusively. We have had a number of these, we've had a number of issues with these during the renovation due to their distance from managing this project. He mentioned foul-smelling dumpsters and lumber. It's been kind of a mess there. I get the feeling that we will be adversely affected by what will basically be a hotel next door that is not managed or policed by anyone local and with owners that are not interested in our community, but only want to maximize dollars. He said if there's anything he could do to help with this issue, he would very much like to be on that committee. And again, my name's Paul Sensat, and thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Paul. In the back? Yeah.
Hi, Nancy Schwartz, four thirteen Pine. I just wanted to share that I think that maybe some more discretion should be used in how we have these Airbnbs. I know that, Craig, yours is run really well because they're on your property. You can look out your kitchen window and look down and see them. And Freddie is on the same street as his Airbnb. But as we've heard already, and I'm aware of, there are many who don't live in this state at all and don't care about anything but their money. And who takes out the trash on a Tuesday if no one's there? Who takes the trash out on Friday if nobody's there? Oh, so we're just going to have rats gather as the trash is in the garage? I, that's just one thought that I'm not sure anybody else has thought of, in addition to the fact that I too am on Pine Road. And we have people walking around, and I get it, I walk around, I ride the golf cart, I ride very slowly so I can wave to my neighbors and friends. But when I don't even know the people anymore who are walking down our road, I feel like I don't live in Clear Lake Shores anymore. And I recognize that we're growing, we have more homes, but I imagine it puts more undue stress on our police force. I don't know that as a fact, but I sure would like to hear the police's input on Airbnbs in a very small community. We're not Galveston. We also don't charge what Galveston charges to have a permit or whatever. I don't understand why we don't do something special for our residents who have Airbnbs here on the island and do something different for people who are out of state or don't live here or limited somehow. If you live on the island, great, then we welcome you and your owner's right here. But if these people are out of state, we know what their purpose is, and why do we want revolving doors on our streets? Do you want one next to you, or you, or you, with somebody from out of state who doesn't care? And you want to smell their trash sitting out there? Just a thought.
Thank you, Nancy. Ms. Georgette?
Georgette South, one thirty-three East Shore. I did not plan on speaking about this tonight, but I feel compelled to speak on this. I believe that the intention on the short-term rental ordinance, when it was originally passed, was to allow our residents to have short-term rentals, which I think everyone in this neighborhood is in favor of. Unfortunately, what it has turned into is, and this may be an unpopular comment, but it has turned into the fact that realtors are advertising this community to out-of-state investors. Plain and simple. They are advertising when they sell to an out-of-state investor and basically bragging about it, that the people never see the home. Then it's turned into an Airbnb. And probably is what is more bothersome about that, is that these realtors live here, and they're doing it home after home after home. Chief knows the issues I have with the one across the street from me, which is now a long-term rental. My back window was busted out of my car. There are a lot of things going on, the activity across the street. I never knew who actually, I don't want to say belonged in the neighborhood, but who's a permanent resident. We have a lot of residents overturning with home selling. But at this point, a lot of us don't know who are actual residents. Now thankfully, the home across the street from me is now a long-term rental. But I feel like it is an issue in that the ordinance needs to be revised and where there are stricter, higher fees, number one. We pay exorbitant fees for permits to build in this neighborhood. And I think the permit fee for a rental is, short-term rental's two hundred and fifty dollars. There is no skin in that game. These people that live outside this community have no vested interest in where this community is going. And unfortunately, I think the only avenue that the city has to allow and make sure that the residents are able to maintain the lifestyle in the community that they moved here to live in is through the ordinance. Stricter, if there's not going to be a homeowner or the owner is not in this vicinity, a management company or something needs to oversee this. We've got people in Washington, up north, buying homes here and then doing short-term rentals. I just think this is the thing we need to be concerned about in Clear Lake Shores, because I don't think the realtors are going to stop advertising. So our only option, I think, my opinion, is the ordinance needs to be much stronger, the fees need to be higher, and there needs to be penalties and fines exorbitantly for when these things are violated.
Thank you, Georgette. Anyone else? Rosalyn, please.
I know y'all are sick of me.
Speak up a little bit, please.
I don't have much of a voice. I had surgery this week and anesthesia's kind of got my voice. But I text these guys every day and Kevin with the photos of what goes on next to me. I'm Rosalyn Pierce, and I live at ten ten Aspen. And the guy that owns the house next door to me lives in Puerto Rico. He says he lives in California, but I've seen pictures of his mansion in Puerto Rico on the coast. And he's an asshole of the world. He truly is. And he's a liar. And he tells me how ugly my house is and that he's got so much money, so much more money than me, and he can understand why I can't do a better job with my house like his beautiful house. But he could care less about that house. And now it's a game where he likes poking on me, I think, because this past weekend, and I'm not a prejudiced person, I'm a realtor, so I can't be, but there were at least twenty black people that moved into that house next door. The weekend before, there were ten black people, and they move in and they carry their four cases of Schlitz beer up the sidewalk. And on this past weekend, on Friday night, Lisa Green across the canal from me said that they were partying until two thirty in the morning. Since I'd had surgery, I was sleeping in the couch on the den and I didn't hear them. But on Saturday night at eleven fifteen, I could hear them, and I called the police. He came out, asking to please tell them that I'm sick and to keep the noise down. The kids were in the yard with tiki torches, and they were talking loud and smoke billowing down the canal. And the adults were on the back patio, and you know, noise carries on the patio. So anyway, the policeman really didn't want to knock on the door, I had to beg him to do it. He told me that he couldn't regulate the number of people that were in that house and that best he could tell from maybe the bridge, it was tiki torches, and that tiki torches are not illegal. So it's the weekends, also with last weekend, they pull up on Friday night and they've got a huge box truck that says Ryder Rental or Hertz Truck Rental, that I think they're carrying their probably food and beer in. And there's four cars in the two driveways. They parked five cars across the street at Skipper's Restaurant that stay there all weekend. One of the cars may still be there, and I told Kevin about it this morning or yesterday. Two of the cars parked next door to the house but in John Shaver's parking lot. So unbelievable amount of cars. And it's been this way for about nine months where they have these RVs with people, you know, living in it and the RV sticking out into the middle of the road.
Rosalyn, your time's up.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, in the back. You can send me an email, I've received a few already, and I have some proposed later.
You may know me, my name's Lindy. Most of you knew my mother. Six one four Clear Lake Road is Cottage, and that has been empty since Mom died because I care about this community. I care about my neighbors that are really important to me. Sorry, got to grab it. And so I would like to be on that committee, and if you would tell me how to do that, because I have left the cottage empty for over six years since she's gone, because I know that if I sell it, somebody is going to buy it and put four houses there and pull the cottage down. And some of you know that that cottage was put there in nineteen twenty-nine. It used to be a horse carriage house at the back of a mansion down in the medical center, which the mansion was pulled down. The horse carriage house was put on a barge and brought down the ship channel and put on the island in nineteen twenty-nine. And so the island means an awful lot to me.
Thank you, Lindy. Just doing that right there, I'll have your name down on the list and I'll get in touch with you. Thanks. Anybody else?
I feel I need to speak up for feedback I'm getting from a lot of our pool members, and they're not comfortable thinking that a lot of these Airbnb people that are staying two days, three days. The one house we know about that was advertising, there were three cars there over the weekend, so don't know how many people were really there because they'll advertise, you know, six beds, bunk beds, so on and so forth. And they're not feeling comfortable knowing that Airbnb people can be coming into the pool, they can get in. Of course, anyone can get in after hours, but assuming that most people here are trying to respect our rules, that would have gate access and can get in and use our pool. So just speaking for a lot of feedback that I've been getting from our current pool members.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Anybody else? I'll put your name down and we'll be selecting them.
Hi, Freddie San Miguel, nine eighteen L. Some of you know me, some of you don't. I'm sorry for what has happened with the Verbo and Airbnb rentals that has happened. I do own one. I love my neighbors dearly, I look out for everybody. I am fortunate to have mine down the street from me. Things happen, like Craig said, you have long, you know, renters that are horrible, you have residents here that are horrible. I don't advertise the pool for a reason. Guests have asked me. I can turn over our books of folks that have asked questions about the pool. I said it's not allowed. I spoke with Kevin. There's those that need to follow rules, that's what Kevin's here for, the city manager's here to make sure things are followed correctly. So I just want to speak for those that do own them, that we have to understand there are rules that we have to follow, and we got to do them according to, you know, to the laws that are written for our city. I don't want anything to happen to my city either. I love Clear Lake Shores, I've lived here a long time, and I want it to stay that close-knit city that it is. But when we have people that are walking or people that come through the neighborhood, we don't have gates, and this came up years ago in regards to gates. We can't put gates. I advertise all the local businesses here, which is most important. That's what keeps all our local businesses going, people that come in, us that come in and support the local businesses from Skippers to Aspens to Soul Freak, you know, to Okies, our local city hangout. So I just want everyone to know that we want to continue to do the best thing we can do with Airbnbs, and I understand not everybody wants them. I welcome the new guests, the new, you know, new folks that have moved here. Yes, I'm also a real estate agent, soon to be out of that as well because there's tough stuff in real estate as well. So I look over for the new adventure that I'm going to turn over. And I'll still have my Airbnb as long as we can have it here in the city and follow the rules. and follow the rules. Thank you.
Thanks, Freddie. Twelve right now. Anybody else for public comments?
May I speak?
Sure.
Briefly. I'm probably gonna regret this. I'd like to be involved in some of the proposed, uh, changes to the ordinance, uh, just to add some teeth to what we can and can't do as the police department. Uh, maybe some ideas on regulating trash takeout, trash can replacement, uh, away from the curb, uh, the number of people that they rent to. There's a lot of things that we can do and there's lots, quite a few things that we can't. But I'd like to be involved in, uh, helping kinda rewrite that and stiffen it up a little bit.
Absolutely. When we get to the item, uh, you'll hear some of my ideas. Thanks, Ms. Machowski.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Linda Machowski and I reside at ten-nineteen North Shore Drive. I've been a resident for thirty-three years and I would like to encourage everyone in this community to do investigation and find out the truth of the matter. I've been a stellar citizen and yet twenty years ago, someone made a false assumption and called me, a mayor called me at home and said, "What kind of a home are you running?" Because I had a big yacht pull up in front of my home and Mr. Red A. Dare came to pay my father a visit. Some terrible negative assumptions was made about my dignity, my honor, and the kind of home I'm running. I've never had an Airbnb, but there are malicious gossip jealous people on this island and I've been victimized terribly by some of these and I'm still living with the consequences of false allegations and false assumptions. So please, we all need to do the next right thing when it comes to, uh, loving and benefiting from the community of Clear Lake Shores. I'm still dealing with this. I'm currently under a threat of criminal charges to use my permitted home.
Excuse me, Ms. Machowski. Excuse me. If you're not gonna discuss about an item on the agenda, then I'm gonna have to ask you to stop.
This was about regards Airbnb's. Thank you.
But you were going down a different road. Anybody else? Yes.
Once again, I just have a question. Is there some sort of contract, uh, list of rules? I, I don't know. How do they run those Airbnbs, uh, so that they're all on the same page?
Yes, there is. And feel free to get with Kevin Harrow, our building inspector.
Okay.
And he can give you that. And it's all online, too.
Okay.
And it's in our ordinances or what they have to answer to.
So there's nothing stated that they can advertise in another state for, you know, ten people? Okay.
All right, having none. Item eleven, public comments closed. Uh, item twelve, consent agenda items A, B, C, and D. Does council want any items polled?
No.
Having none. Does anybody have, uh, any issue with approving consent agenda A, B, C, and D?
Nope.
Having none. Consent agendas accepted, A, B, C, and D. Item number thirteen, presentation of fiscal year twenty-one audit from Belt Harris Paycheck LLP. Stephanie Harris, welcome.
Good evening. Thank you. I see the Brown report before you on the table there this evening. That is what I'm presenting from. Uh, page one is our official report to council. Very pleased to say that we are issuing a clean, unmodified opinion on the city's financial statements. Unmodified being the highest level of assurance we can provide as the independent auditor that the financial statements are materially correct and that all disclosures required by generally accepted accounting principles have been included. Page fifteen is a statement of net position for the city at September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one. This particular presentation reflects full accrual accounting, simply meaning that we have picked up the city's long-term assets as well as any long-term liabilities. The city ended the twenty-twenty-one fiscal year with approximately fifteen-point-seven in total assets, just over one-point-one million in total liabilities, leaving you with a positive ending net position of fourteen-point-six million. Uh, next to that column, you'll see a component unit column. There, the component unit had just, uh, under five-hundred thousand in total assets, just under six-thousand in total liabilities for total ending net position of four-hundred-and-ninety-two-thousand. And that does represent the Clear Lake Shores Economic Development Corporation. Page sixteen and seventeen, this is a sideways presentation, again, of a traditional income statement, also full accrual. So there are things that are non-cash in here such as depreciation expense on the city's capital assets. For the twenty-twenty-one fiscal year, the city had just over two-point-seven million in total expenses to provide all municipal services, just over five-hundred-and-eighty-four-thousand in charges for services, capital grants and contributions of three-hundred-and-thirty-thousand. For the year, this represented a net expense of one-point-eight million. After general revenues there at the bottom of just over two-point-three million, the majority of which represents sales tax dollars, the city saw an overall positive increase in its net position of five-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand. If you were to compare this particular activity to the prior year, you would note that the city saw an overall net reduction in revenues and expenses and a lot of that can be attributed to grant activity in the prior year. Page twenty-two and twenty-three, this is the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. This particular presentation for the city's governmental funds is presented modified accrual or the same basis by which council reviews and adopts operating budgets. For the twenty-twenty-one fiscal year, the city had just under three million in total revenues, total expenditures, which did include, uh, principal and interest on debt service as well as any capital outlay of two-point-four million. After some inter-fund transfers, the city again saw an overall positive increase in fund balance of just over five-hundred-and-eleven-thousand. Again, one of the benchmarks that we look at, uh, to evaluate the overall health of the city would be the ending fund balance within the general fund in comparison to your annual operating expenses. And you generally want to see at least twenty-five percent of your annual operating expenses within ending fund balance. The city's ending fund balance of four-point-two million in total was well in excess of a year's worth of expenses. And if you were to flip the page back at the balance sheet, you would see the amount of unassigned fund balance within that four-point-two. Uh, that is available for appropriation. Again, a very healthy ending fund balance of approximately eighty-four percent of your twenty-twenty-one expenditures. Uh, would also just like to recognize staff for the incredible job that they do and all that, uh, goes on during the city. And we appreciate the opportunity to serve as your independent auditor. I'd be happy to take any questions.
I know y'all did a lot of work on all this and thanks to all the council members and staff for doing a great job on budget each year and it obviously shows in our, our annual audit. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number fourteen, new business discussion, possible action may be taken on the following items. Item A, approve return of police department safety vision recording devices to manufacture when removed from service. Mr. Spear.
Uh, this is in response to my request to the manufacturer to return their product. We're having, had, uh, great difficulty in getting these, uh, these cameras integrated and implemented into our, uh, police department. Uh, we've experienced some failures. Some of that's been documented in prior, in prior meetings. Uh, did reach out to them. The owner, uh, had someone on his behalf reach back to me and, uh, they're willing to accept this equipment back minus, uh, any of the hard-installed items. We had some, uh, like internet antennas that were installed for download and some cabling. Uh, we're not gonna take that out. And then, uh, minus a fifteen percent, uh, restock fee. And that's all based on not having anything damaged like, uh, cables cut. So as we're upgrading and, uh, we're currently utilizing what we can of that camera system for the police department and, uh, the plan is to have those swapped out of whatever vehicles and then also swap the body cams when Motorola's product is available and to be deployed. So I thought that was a opportunity to recover some of that cost from an earlier purchase that just didn't work out and so, um, I would recommend approval of that.
I'd like to make a motion to approve item A and return that equipment.
I second.
Motion by Mr. Scanlon, second by Ms. Lade. Uh, any discussion?
Do you have a dollar amount?
It's in your packet. I believe it's around twenty-three thousand dollars. But, no, I didn't commit it to memory, but I think it's around twenty-three thousand.
This was the equipment that was in service for about one year, if I recall correctly?
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion? Having none. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed, nay. Having none, motion passes. Uh, item B, resolution twenty-twenty-two dash zero seven, a resolution of the city council of the city of Clear Lake Shores, Texas, supporting a no-wake zone in and around the Clear Lake area on June twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two during the Texas Outlaw Challenge. Uh, this is something that we've participated probably for the last six or seven years and, uh, Paul Robinson usually brings that and discusses it with us. I saw his presentation at Nassau Bay. Uh, they just try to keep the waves down in Clear Lake while they do their, uh, short-track races to see how fast they could go and then after around twelve-thirty-one o'clock, it opens back up, uh, from the no-wake zone.
All motion to approve resolution twenty-twenty-two dash zero seven.
I second.
Motion by Mr. Scanlon, second by Ms. Lade. Any discussion? Having none. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Having none, motion passes. Item C, resolution twenty-twenty-two dash zero eight, a resolution of city council of the city of Clear Lake Shores, authorizing the adoption of the twenty-twenty-two Galveston County Texas Hazard Mitigation Plan update. Mr. Spear.
Uh, this is a hazard mitigation update. City of Clear Lake Shores with other county partners, uh, are co-permittees on this. Uh, some of the, some jurisdictions decided to go on their own and that was fine. But, uh, this is hazard mitigation plan to identify and, and hopefully mitigate or fix hazards within our community. A lot of work's been done to our municipal buildings under this program such as, uh, generators, um, for power supply during storms and so on and so forth. This is really the first step in qualifying for FEMA help when funds are available to mitigate these problems. So, uh, Kevin and I spent some time going through that and identifying our needs, uh, making comments and then, uh, submitting that. And it's part of a larger document that was in your packet and I wanna say it's over a thousand pages. We're real close to it. Uh, it's light bedtime reading and, uh, I would just recommend approval of that. We have about thirty pages in that total document.
I'll make a motion that we accept resolution twenty-twenty-two oh eight, uh, resolution for the city council to the city, of the city of Clear Lake Shores, authorizing the ad, adulation of the twenty-twenty-seven Galveston County Texas Hazard Mitigation Plan update. That's why I second everything.
I second.
You have to repeat it.
(laughing).
I have a motion by Ms. Lade, second by Mr. Scanlon. Any further discussion? Having none. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Having none, motion passes. Item D is create an ad hoc committee to review the existing city ordinances concerning short-term rentals and provide any recommendations for changes to the city council, um, by the August second, twenty-twenty-two city council meeting. I know that sounds pretty aggressive, but, uh, hopefully that can be done. I put this item on here just because of the number of, of emails and phone calls we've been receiving. Um, so I've got several people that have requested, uh, to be on, on the committee and I'll get with them and see which ones would be the best. But, uh, some of them that are out there is Craig Ward, Kitty Shufflin, uh, Mike Quintero, Angela Lester, Lindy just showed up, Chris Richardson. And then we were gonna put Brent Spear and a bigger thing, I need to know who's, is a, a council member to be selected. So we'll, we'll, we'll decide that in a second. Y'all need to make a motion for that part of it. Um, and then, uh, so just, there's many of them coming into the city and, and, uh, just on, on that, you can't say no SDRs, okay? It's against the law. So, but you can make rules and regulations to make it very hard. You can also increase costs. So there's a lot of levers out there that we can pull. Um, and we also need to put teeth into the ordinance so that, one, our building inspector, our city administrator can close them down. The current process that's out there now basically runs us down a three-month path where a person would, you know, Kevin would have to give them notice and then it has to go to council and then it has to be voted by council to go to court and then the court has to decide. So it's a very long, drawn-out process. So if we can give some teeth back into the ordinance, possibly a, consider a fine. So I'm just throwing some ideas out there. And then also to have the chief to review it and see how things can help him and his officers. Uh, if you look at Kima's ordinance and stuff like that, they have some other levers they can pull that after ten o'clock, if you're serving alcohol to other people outside of the people that are staying in the SDR, you have to have security present. You know, now if you don't, the police officers can actually go do something about it and shut it down. So those are, those are good teeth to put in there. Um, they also, the fees, we need to look at the fees. Um, I think the fees are incredibly low for what we're doing. Um, maybe, uh, you know, for initial fees, you increase those and the people that are already in, they've, they've got it, gotten in and, and we're good with that. Um, so those are always items out there to look at and then also taking care of the trash and the upkeep of, uh, when, uh, people are renting those facilities and then they leave, well, the management company should be responsible for following up on those items and if they're, they need to be readily available for that. If they're not, then maybe we need to have something in there that keeps the, the operators within so much distance so that way they're here. Um, even consider possibly the owners need to be within the city limits. Um, and then the other thing to consider, too, is our noise levels. Um, we do have noise level ordinance out there. Um, I did wanna address that, um, SDRs can have people in their SDR. If it's eleven people right now, maybe we need to consider a difference the way, the way we set that up, but if they have eleven people, that's legal. It, it's legal for people to sit on their porch and smoke cigarettes and, and drink a beer. Um, you may not like it, but it's no different than your next-door neighbor doing that and you may have to have discussions like that. But, um, as long as it's within the realm of, of what our city ordinances cover, then that's, that unfortunately, or fortunately or unfortunately, is fine. We all have to deal with that as neighbors and, uh, work with that. Now, as far as a hotel business being next door to myself where I live and stuff, I, I, I personally wouldn't like it myself. So I'm not a big fan of the SDRs and hopefully we, we create some stuff that, uh, limits to how many there in the, in the city of Clear Lake Shores. So that's my, my stand on that and, and creating the ad hoc committee. Um, and then I was gonna work with, because I, I owe a couple of phone calls to some people and see what they would bring to the ad hoc committee, but for tonight mainly I, I wanna assign, uh, four residents, which I'll go cho, choose those residents and then a, a council member and then Mr. Spear with, uh, Mr. Chief Keel as a secondary, um, review.
All right. I make a motion that we create an ad hoc committee to review the existing city ordinances concerning short-term rentals and provide any recommendations or changes to the city council by August second, twenty-twenty-two.
Do you have some, a recommendation for a council member?
I'll second the motion.
I need a council member to be assigned to it.
I'll be assigned to it or whoever. I recommend... I recommend, I motion that I be assigned to it.
Okay.
That wasn't on the thing that I read.
I will second the motion.
All right. Any discussion? Having none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Having none, motion passes, and of course, all council members will see everything when it comes back and obviously reach out to Monica and if anything you need to discuss. Item E is approval of a dock box installed on Clear Lake Shores waterfront lease B 52A. Mr. Scanlon.
All right, the dock box topic. I'm lucky on this one. So council and waterfront compliance committee met, we reviewed the 10-year lease, and we're very likely making some changes. We are making some changes. There will be some form of a change to clean up some language. One of the items that was brought up was the dock box regulation where it explicitly states you cannot have a dock box, and there was debate whether you could have one on the dock or you could have one on the land, and it's a big gray area, and in my opinion, this is kind of odd you have something so specific, right? But it's been there for almost a decade. This request is for a dock box that was installed, what appears to be based on those discussions in that open meeting, because it is the dock box that the waterfront compliance committee is using for their height and length and width, maximum specification on the proposed waterfront lease document that's going to be renewed in January of 2023. So this is a request to, let's say, jump the gun and go ahead, it's already installed is my understanding, and ask for council's approval on it. All of council was, I think all of council was at the meeting with the waterfront compliance committee. I don't quite remember, so I think we all have a pretty good picture of what was talked about. We were all there, and my only thought is this might be opening the floodgates for the dock box requests in the summer of 2022 that will just become prolific, so I guess, can I make a motion on this?
Sure.
At the end, I'll make a motion to approve the dock box that's installed at waterfront lease BO 52A.
I second.
Motion by Mr. Scanlon, second by Ms. Lade. Any discussion?
Yeah, so does everybody come and ask for that now? Or are we going to put something out there that says, here is the size that we're going to approve and just let people start putting them on there now before this passes? Or how are we going to do that?
The way it's working right now is that each one has to be approved by the city, and city doesn't want to make that decision, so it's coming to council.
Right, because this is like a, basically asking to do something that the ordinance says you cannot do or the lease says you can't do, so we're allowing a variance essentially for this one thing. Yeah, it's just a dock box, but it's also, it's a funny deal.
So are we allowing it just for that one dock? Or are we making a blanket statement that it's allowed for all docks that want to install it?
Just that one dock, otherwise it has to come as an ordinance change. Unless you want to designate that to the waterfront review board. Right, Kevin?
Do they have the ability to allow violation of the lease even though they're like a non-open meetings act unofficial committee? It's all very gray.
Well, it said dock boxes can be approved by the city, so define the city. We can go back and get in touch with our attorney and find out what that is. Is, to me, if you, if the council assigns that to the review board, I see that not a problem. Mr. Mstelski?
Yes, can you clarify what a dock box is?
Yes, we'll have a picture.
It's the fiberglass boxes. This one's a horizontal, so they gave the sizes. It has like a seat on top, but it's basically about five feet long. This one has, it's 29 inches tall, 72 inches long, no, yes, and 29 inches wide. It's a storage box with a lid, and it's...
Better than having a laptop hanging around.
And the previous issue was, I mean, there was one that was being built on the premises, which strictly, you know, addresses that, and then there's already one already built that was not approved, so it's non-conforming that's on North Shore. Any further discussion?
My only concern with it, I mean, I'm pretty sure we're going to have this dock box size allowed in the renewed lease. I can't see it going another way unless there's a lot of public outcry against it, but it just will just open the floodgates to 5,000 dock boxes that all have to be approved.
Can you amend the motion to divert it to waterfront compliance? Or give them the authority to?
I will amend my motion to approve the dock box proposed to be installed on waterfront lease B 052A, and all further dock box requests shall be referred to the waterfront compliance committee.
Waterfront's review board.
Waterfront review board.
I second.
Kevin, is that fine? The review board or the compliance? Review board or compliance committee? Review board or compliance committee for the waterfront?
The dock box is the review board.
So that's you, a council member, and somebody from the committee?
Somebody from the waterfront committee, yes.
I was inquiring about whether this applied to dock boxes that are on piers or if it applied to dock boxes that were on the ground. So is this all just pure, just pure only?
Well, this is a single dock box installation, and then all further dock box requests will go to the waterfront compliance board, which is Kevin, a council member, and a waterfront compliance person who will hopefully be working in step with the current lease modifications so they can guide those requests to conform with what will be completed in January. It's very complicated for a dock box, but it seems like it would work.
If this is installed on there...
I know, and this is a dispute. Yes, Craig?
I'll probably have to weigh on this, but you need to look at a bigger picture because there's, I've been out there 35 years, and for 34 years, we've been going around and around and around and around on what, you've been out on the waterfront, there's always changes, so it's just one of those things, but I mean, there's giant chairs, decorations, there's all these different things. Should you talk about all of this stuff instead of just a dock box?
So most of that's already covered in the lease agreement.
I understand.
This one specifically was noted out. All right, any further discussion? Do you want to finalize your motion?
I can try. Hey, I motion to approve the dock box as installed at the Clear Lake Shores waterfront lease BO 52A, and all further dock box installation requests should go to the waterfront compliance board for approval before installation.
I second.
All right, motion by Mr. Scanlon, second by Ms. Lade. Any further discussion?
I don't think it would go to compliance, it would go to waterfront review board.
Yes, I...
Review board, beginning to mix up. Waterfront compliance committee, waterfront review board.
Y'all get it straight, she's running out of things.
It is waterfront review board. Any discussion? Having none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion passes. All right, item F, action on DS9 Investment Property LLC, owner of property located at Abstract 18 Madoun Survey Lot 201, Clear Lake Shores, requesting zoning change from NC Neighborhood Commercial to C1 Commercial District. And I don't think there's anything I need to let anybody know anything further about what this is about.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to deny that request.
I'll second the motion.
Motion by Mr. Cronister and second by Mr. Wordis. To deny, sorry. Any discussion?
I feel it's important to make the statement that denying or approving this isn't going to stop the deck from being built, and that everybody needs to know that.
Yeah, there's...
This has nothing to do with the deck being built, it simply has something to do with the size of the deck and future owners of that deck.
It also has to do with how that's policed. You know, they're going to conform to different rules than the C1. So I think what we heard from the citizens was that's what they want.
I agree.
And once you turn it over to C1, it conforms to different rules than what it is right now. And you are correct, and I did talk to Joel and those guys, they're moving forward, they're replating, they're going to build that dock no matter what. So you're right, this is not going to keep that dock from happening, and it's not going to keep music from being on that dock. They're just going to have to shut it down earlier than a C1 property. So that's going to happen regardless of what we do. My opinion for making the motion is that's to protect the citizens as best we can, that's what we're here to do. He can still move forward and do what he wants to do with his property.
And I'll add to that too, if it stays as the NC, he still builds a dock, he's looking at probably going over the water. It's up to the citizens or the public to control that. The city has no jurisdiction out in the water. That's GLO and US Army Corps of Engineers. Any further discussion?
I'd also like to mention, I think you might have mentioned it once before, Mayor, that the purpose of having an area zoned NC Neighborhood Commercial to serve as a buffer between a commercial area and a residential area.
Mike, use the microphone, please.
Just clarification, I was under the impression that if it was neighborhood commercial, they could not have music on.
Our ordinance doesn't say...
Whereas commercial, they could.
No, it's, it has to just shut down at a certain time.
Well, if that's listed as one of the allowable uses in NC, which I don't know if light music is, I don't know it that well.
It doesn't say it's not.
So if it were commercial, it could play louder and longer?
Well, in that zone, the ordinance, like residential allows for residential, and neighborhood commercial allows for residential and this list of things. It's not a, if it doesn't say you can, it'll specifically says you can do this list only, so if it's not listed on there, it can't be used for it. And then commercial goes, you can do anything you can do in residential, anything in neighborhood commercial, and these additional things, so it's like a building, you build up on the last one.
Any further discussion? In favor of denying, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Having none, motion passes. Item G, action on DS9 Investment Property LLC, owner of property located at Abstract 18 Madoun Survey Lot 202, Clear Lake Shores, requesting a zoning change from NC Neighborhood Commercial to C1 Commercial District.
Make a motion to deny that one also.
I will second the motion.
Motion by Mr. Cronister, deny, second by Mr. Wordis. Any discussion? Having none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion passes. Item H, action on Suzanne Lee, owner of property located at 1016 Aspen, requesting a change in zoning from R1 Residential District to C1 Commercial District. Same thing again, recommendation from the planning and zoning board.
I make a motion to deny action, to deny the approval of rezoning from R1 to C1 on Suzanne Lee's property at 1016 Aspen.
I will second the motion.
Motion by Ms. Lade, second by Mr. Wordis. Any discussion?
No.
Having none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion passes. For item I, action on Suzanne Lee, owner of property located at 1026 Aspen, requesting a change in zoning from R1 Residential District to C1 Commercial District. Same thing as the previous item.
I make a motion that we deny the application to rezone from R1 to C1 property at 1016 Aspen Road.
You amended to 1026?
I sure can amend it to 1026. Sorry about that.
I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Lade, second by Mr. Scanlon. Any discussion? Having none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Having none, motion passes. Item J, this is executive session pursuant to section 551.72, authorize governmental body to deliberate an executive session on certain matters concerning real property. A governmental body may conduct a closed meeting to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property if deliberation in an open meeting would have detrimental effect on the position of the governmental body in negotiations with third person. At this time, whatever it is, 8:16, we go into recess. Thank you all for coming out, and we're going to go into executive session. We'll reconvene at 8:56, City Council from executive session. Does anybody have any action items coming out of executive session pursuant to section 551.72 and the rest of that reading?
No.
No actions, then City Council is adjourned at 8:56.